Your line, Mr. Chairman.
We'd like to call this Greenville County Council Committee at the whole meeting to order, and we'll begin with the invocation, and since I believe, I don't see Counselor Farmer with us on Zoom, which would be a strange place to do the invocation, I will ask if Counselor Long would like to give us the invocation.
Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for every person present here, Lord. Thank you for being with us, giving us good weather, Father, and I pray that you would be with us as we go through the meeting today to give us the knowledge we need to make good decisions for the people of Greenville County. Please help us to be discerned and to study what we're looking at and to take it seriously, Father. We ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes.
We have approval of the minutes from our May 20 meeting.
Thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the reconsideration of Bellowing. Who has the memo for that one?
Chairman.
Counselor.
As I mentioned earlier in our last meeting, I think it would be really important we get some legal advice from our attorneys on this, so I'm going to move if we go into executive session to receive advice, legal advice on this reconsideration motion from our attorney's side.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in... What's that?
Oh, so all the people don't have to leave.
Okay, so just so the public knows what we're talking about, if we do go into executive session, we'll step out of this room into a back room, so that way you don't have to leave the room, we'll leave instead. So, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Feedback shortly.
This is for June 29th, when you and I was at it with Willis and Joe Neil. Yeah, yeah, Joe. This is for someone who's a holiday, kept calling. And you won't be, and you make them all right.
Oh, that'll work.
We've got to wait for the rest of them to come back in.
You're allowed, Mr. Chairman.
I have not heard from the eye in the sky yet. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Hopefully, you enjoyed your conversation. We could have put on some music or something that'd put you to sleep.
You're allowed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee of the whole went into executive session for the receipt of legal advice, where the advice was related to matter PP 2025-15 and to other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege regarding this preliminary plan application, and no action was taken, and we are now coming out.
Thank you. All right, so back to agenda item four, reconsideration of PP 2025-015, Belling. And I will just open it up for discussion or for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a recommendation that we send a recommendation to the Planning Commission to reconsider PP 225-015, Belling.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I would just again urge the body to tread very lightly, because I think we are walking into a lawsuit. And I would ask as a follow-up to that motion, to amend that motion, to say that if counsel does approve this motion to send a reconsideration request to Planning Commission, that we allow for them a number of more to report that explains our rationale for being against this, so that they have, A, an understanding that it wasn't a unanimous vote, and B, that there are pros and cons to what we're doing if we pass this. And so that's the amendment that I would make to this motion.
I'm amicable to that amendment, and I'll call for a roll call.
So a roll call on the amendment or on the motion?
Well, we can vote on the amendment, I'm amicable to it.
All right, so all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it?
And then roll call on that.
And roll call on the motion on the floor, please.
Yes is to send it back, no is to not.
Send it back to full counsel?
No, yes, yes, it's to send it back to Planning Commission.
That's the, yeah, yeah. Where mine goes?
We're muted.
Did our other counselor through Zoom send his vote?
Mr. Chairman, of the members attending, you have three in favor, seven opposed, and I have not heard from Mr. Collins.
Okay, so the motion is denied. Next item on the agenda is FY 2026 Greenville County Budget. And we have the ordinance up for second reading, of course, at counsel, and I will open the floor for discussion or amendments.
Do you want to read or propose?
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Bradman.
I have the proposed changes to the budget ordinance for the fiscal, uh, financial year 2026 budget. Reduce Infrastructure Bank FLO revenue by 12 million, reduce Infrastructure Bank transfer out of, out to pay roads by 8,500,000, reduce road program transfer in from Infrastructure Bank by 8,500, and reduce road program expenses by 4 million.
I was going to say, just for clarity, if Mr. Ministerate could just explain, that's...
This, this is the numbers that were all involved when we had the discussion last time about changing the FLO, how we'd go about going forward. So we backed out some of these revenue numbers, the 12 million.
Could you, could you read them again while you're giving us?
Yes, it's reduce Infrastructure Bank FLO revenue by 12 million, reduce Infrastructure Bank transfer out to road program by 8.5 million, reduce road program transfer in from Infrastructure Bank by 8.5 million, and then reduce road program expenditures by 4 million. And what, what we were able to do is use some of the fund balances, both the Infrastructure Bank and Road Program Fund Balance, to keep the expenditures for roads up still, and only, we lost 4 million there.
So the new road, so the new road program number is 36.
36 million is what we have in there now.
Essentially, this was the way that we did not have to take from the, the
School.
The schools and the other districts when it came to this upcoming budget year.
That's correct.
This was the way to fix that.
From the existing FLOs.
But that is for just this budget year only?
That's correct.
So the next go around could be different.
We'll revisit numbers and...
So all those total transactions, that's what they did, in and out of the, that's all they accomplished, basically? All those transfers from the general fund and back and forth, that accomplished that with the FLOs?
Yeah, none of these were in general fund, quite frankly. These were all between the FLO revenue, which is within the Infrastructure Fund.
Right.
The Road Program, which is a separate fund.
Gotcha.
And Infrastructure Bank, of course, and then the Road Program expenditures. So we basically were taking money from the Infrastructure Bank, where the FLO money is accumulated.
There you go.
Transferring it out to the Road Program, which is a separate fund.
Gotcha.
And so we're showing it on the revenue side, and then turn around showing expenditures.
Counsel Tripp, I think you have another question.
Okay, so the first one is reduce Infrastructure Bank FLO revenue by 12 million.
That's correct.
That is the pot of money that we get from the FLO.
Well, that's, that was the part of the, the increase that was coming in, part of the increase that was coming in to the FLOs.
Okay, are we reducing cities, are we reducing schools, or any, by the taking those 12 million dollars?
No, this 12 million is coming back out. So we're reducing our projected revenue. We had increased our revenue originally by...
Approximately 18.
About 18 million. So we backed that out of the, of the projection, is what we're doing. So that didn't impact anybody, quite frankly. It, it actually gave money back to all the taxing jurisdictions, because it did not take it from them.
Okay, so this would reduce the road funds program by 12 million?
That will reduce the funds that, yeah, from the Infrastructure Bank that could be available for roads by 12 million. But what, how we're making that up is from fund balance, in both Infrastructure Bank...
The rainy day fund?
Each fund has surplus funds.
Okay.
And this FLO money was available in that fund. There was enough available to basically take about 8 million dollars to make up the difference.
Okay, so what, what does our county policy, fiscal policy say on fund balances? We have to keep between 25 and...
35% of general fund balance.
So...
General fund balance.
So I'm still not clear where this 12 million is at and where it's going to.
Okay, the 12 million was projected revenue from changing the FLO that the county kept, the funds the county kept, from 31% to 62%. That was the original proposal.
Okay.
Okay? And then after much discussion with county council, we were able to pull that back and basically say, okay, let's not go backwards, let's go forward. So based on projections from FLOs that have been approved this past year, that haven't really come online yet, we are projecting that will bring in revenue that will allow us to do this, to tune about six, 6.5 million, I believe.
Let's stick with the 12 million, because you're, you're saying 12, and six, and eight, and all that, and that's what's a little bit confusing. So this 12 is a projection...
That's a projection.
Of FLO money.
That's a projection.
So it's not real money. But this is money that we counted in the budget for roads. So is the effect of this budget ordinance change pulling that 12 million dollars out of what we were originally projecting to be the road fund in the budget?
It is, a portion of it is, when I said 4 million, going from 40 million that was proposed for roads, down to 36 million. Okay? So the difference is being made up by fund balance from both Infrastructure Bank and Road Program.
Okay, and so Infrastructure Bank fund balance, what percentage of that do we have left remaining? And I mean, we're supposed to be between 25 and 35%.
That's for general fund. That policy is for general fund.
General fund only?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, can you just go to the second and just, I, I mean, I don't like being sprung this on the last minute, so I'd like to understand, you know, this, this is not, this, this is not, I don't think this is the right way to do it, but can you just walk through the other three bullet points and, you know, what are we doing with this line, and what are we doing with that line item, so we know what we're doing? Because I, it's just not clear.
Okay. And I guess you gotta, I gotta step back a little bit and explain. When we do a FLO... we do a FLO, the county receives 30% off the top. We retain 31%, let's be exact, 31% of the, the revenue, the property taxes. The rest of it is distributed between the taxing jurisdictions, school district, fire district, cities, wherever it is. And so, it's spread based on their, uh, millage. So, uh, we accumulate the funds there, and then we use the money from the infrastructure bank for a number of different things. General fund gets a big portion of it for operating. That, that's been going on for years. Uh, road program has gotten money for that. Uh, and so, it's transferred out from there. That's really a collection point, if you will. And then it goes out to the various other funds. So, uh, when we reduce the transfer out, basically, we're saying we're not getting the money in, so we don't have money to transfer out as much. If we're, if we remove the revenue side, then we have less funds available to transfer out. So, it's just keeping the, the funds in balance, so to speak, uh, as we go. If, if we raise an expenditure, we better have a corresponding raise in revenue, or vice versa. If we lower revenue, we have to reduce the expenditure. A transfer out is a, basically, an expenditure. And then you can carry it forward by doing that, by reducing the amount that's transferred out from infrastructure bank to road program. Well, that changes the complexion of that fund then. So, you have less money coming in. We had fund balance over there also, so we were able to just reduce the expenditure by 4 million. By using fund balance. We don't budget to use fund balance. That's, that's, uh, basically, uh, what you have to start the year, and then what you have at the end of the year.
Okay. I, 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 I think I follow you, but I don't-
I did have just- Mr. Administrator, the, just to summarize the, the so-called narrative as far as schools are concerned, it seemed like the original proposal was that they were gonna be out 8 million dollars, but that in actuality, that might have been up to 14 million dollars. Then there was, uh, after a discussion here, that was, we thought maybe they would be out 4 million dollars. Are you, are you saying now with this proposal, it would be zero? I mean, we're, we're- Well, this proposal is what council actually talked about last time we were together. Okay. Uh, the 8 million was just a number that was thrown out by the school district. It was never an official number. It was never a number that we used, quite frankly. Uh, we had not given, given them any number at that point in time, because we were extracting the data to make sure that we had everything accounted for by each entity. It, it came into 13,800,000 dollars, is what the potential original impact to the school district would have been.
Yes.
More concerning was the impact that it could have on some of the small fire departments throughout the county. And that's where it, it really opened some of our eyes, because, uh, for instance, one of them, I think their budget's 3.1 million, and this would have been a 500,000 dollar impact, which is significant, uh, on a budget that's small. Uh, so that's where we started going back and revisiting, uh, the different, uh, aspects of the FLO streams that are coming in, and looked at what we are projecting going forward. And we do believe we'll be able to be successful doing what we proposed.
Okay, so there, the, and this is a friendly conversation. I hope this doesn't sound adversarial. Um, I, the, the school board's criticism was that we have to make, they have to make their budget, and we could be throwing them off. Our, I'm just making sure, this is zero, we're having zero impact on what they anticipated getting from us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Currently, this would be out of the growth, is what we saw. And we saw significant growth just from last year to this year, uh, in FLO revenue stream. And, uh, there is a number in the pipeline, and I'm, I'm pretty confident there'll be a number more coming forward this year, which we'll add to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any impact on cities?
No, because they're in the same, same boat.
There's no impact whatsoever under this current upcoming budget, other than future growth.
Yeah, the, the future growth of that, that segment of the, uh, revenue streams that they receive, they're just like any other taxing jurisdiction.
Okay. And this road program, is it, the, the, the balance of that program, is it based on any future FLO revenue coming in? I'm not talking for deals that have been done in the past. Like, for instance, there have been no FLOs this year. Does that mean that there's gonna be a declining pot of money, or is that gonna impact the roads, um, pot of money?
Well, obviously, if there's a decline in revenue, but there are a number in the pipelines that haven't come online yet, that, uh, if you recall, a number were passed last year. And, uh, so those will all come online and generate, and they go for 20 years. Uh, so-
Right, but if the pipeline shuts down, as it seems like it has?
Well, if, that's, it, we won't see a growth. We won't see growth if, if it shuts down.
Okay.
You're exactly right.
One final question. Do you have a document that redlines the changes between the budget last year and this year?
No, I don't.
So, you just gave us a document that, like, just set the budget, where the budget was, but there's no way for us to review what was done last year versus this year?
Well, it, yeah, it's got, it's got comparatives to the last, uh, last year. Absolutely.
All the last, what's on last year's budget compared to this year's?
Yeah, it's, it's all in there. We just didn't highlight anything for you.
Any other questions?
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Mitchell?
I just have a follow-up for the administrator. Um, all the things that you outlined before, and you said that schools will be impacted, cities will be impacted, fire districts will be impacted, and you gave us numbers. Are you now saying that everything that you gave us before, nothing is impacted? Everything is zero impact?
We're not taking any of the past, uh, the existing FLOs that they had been receiving, uh, based on the projections now. We're doing, on the future. So, as they come online, and that's what we're evaluating now, that percentage to retain in order to generate the revenue that we need to sustain, uh, the program. So, none of their existing revenue will be impacted.
Okay, so that fire station that you gave us as an example, they're gonna get all of their money?
They are.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing is affordable housing. I see that's down to 1 million dollars now. Um, so, we took money from affordable housing and put it towards roads? Is, I'm, I'm just asking.
Not in, in, uh, not directly, no. Uh, it came, uh, more so from the proposed millage decrease. Uh, if you recall, uh, affordable housing was receiving millage, uh, to, uh, provide the additional 2 million dollars over what we receive annually of 1 million dollars from the Prisma settlement. And so, in order to accomplish, uh, a proposed millage decrease, uh, we reduced that millage.
Okay. So, what was the total amount of millage that was reduced in this budget?
1.5.
1.5, 1.5 mils?
1.5 millions. One mil is worth 3.5 million dollars.
Okay. That's all you guys got? 1.5 mils? Man, happy warriors.
Counsel Seaman.
Oh, sorry, what are you doing?
Thank you, sir. I can't speak anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a question about, um, under the municipal paving assistance piece, um, it says the county should utilize the formula used in fiscal year 2001 to determine allocations. Um, can you remind us what that, um, formula is?
That, that program has been in place probably since the late 90s, and it's, uh, 700,000 was the number. That number has never changed. It's never gone up. It's based on the, uh, registrations for vehicles within municipalities, and they receive their proportionate share of the 700,000, um, which, it's just part of the road program money.
Thank you. And I have one more. Um, and then, um, under section eight, under road paving, and I know it is, it has been the custom and practice of council to make sure that roads, everybody got some roads repaved, but, um, just curious, like philosophically, if we really wanna get our worst roads done and up to a better par, would we not be better off being district agnostic? Um, we represent the whole county, um, because our language here says, no one district shall receive an allocation exceeding 15% of the total funds. Well, you know, if Mr. Bradley's district has the most worst roads, but he can only get 15%, then we're really not tackling the problem. Wondering just philosophically if we might reconsider, like, again, being sort of district agnostic and just say, we have X amount, and we're, wherever the worst roads are for this cycle, those are the ones we're gonna hit. Uh, just, just a thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel.
Mr. Administrator, it would be a fair statement to say that, uh, am I assessing this correctly, that we are leaving the current FLOs that we are administering and are currently active in the county as they are in perpetuity, but moving forward, all new FLOs, the county will take a larger stake of that. This, and as my understanding, this allows schools to budget, because their budget came out for ours, okay? They beat us to it, great. Uh, fire district, same thing. Now, when we take the 2017 budget up this fall, they'll know that the revenue stream will remain from what they have, but moving forward, it won't be as much. So, they'll be able to budget for that. Is that a fair statement? Okay. Uh, hold on, I'm not, I'm not finished, please.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, additionally, yes, Ms. Seaman, and for the, uh, roads and public infrastructure, we have, I have, we've talked to staff, and as, you know, there is the list of the, of the worst roads, and a list of the most heavily used roads. So, it's gonna come up in, in here shortly, is to, if you receive that, I think all of us receive the roads in your district. Everybody got that file. Uh, what I'm gonna ask is that roads and public infrastructure looks at it from a committee standpoint and says, hey, let's take a mix of the worst roads and the most heavily used, and say, okay, let's, let's find that fine blend. But I think the 15% is absolutely changeable. I think that was designed so we couldn't say, you get, one guy says, hey, I get, all the road money comes in my district this year. So, absolutely, I'm, I'm amicable with that, and I think we could, we'll definitely fix that, the roads and infrastructure public works committee, for sure.
Cool, thank you.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I have to apologize.
Thanks.
I have to apologize to Counsel Russo, he's been trying to flag me down for a minute.
I appreciate it. Trying to be patient, you know? I think we all practiced that. Um, so, can I get this right? Are we, we have these changes that we've made? Are we voting on these changes right now, or are we making amendments to what we're going forward with?
This, the memo that, that Counsel Bradley read out would be addressing this, so the public knows that as of this reading, we've corrected what the original budget would have reflected going, you know, that would have been taken away from the other bodies.
Okay, so-
But it needs to be an amendment.
What's that?
That needs to be an amendment.
Right, this, yeah, we will be making amendment tonight to do that.
And we're making amendments now?
Now.
Or are we going?
It might be prudent for us to vote on this one before we-
Yeah, I was about to say, because that, that's kind of the basis of everything we're working off of, so-
Right.
Can I make a motion to vote on this amendment?
Sure, if it's not a discussion.
Is everybody comfortable? I don't, Dan, did you want to-
I got some more discussion, but it's not about this.
Well, let me just, let me just ask this, because it could be, I mean, if it's, if it's, my question's about the FLOs, so, I think it might be relevant. So, we're not touching anything in the past, but moving forward, we're giving them a haircut. What, what percentage are the schools, the cities, the fire districts, what, how much are we taking from them?
I think that will fluctuate. We're in the process of drafting the ordinance now to give us some versatility for, as the additional FLOs come on board, we can scale it back. We're not trying to give anybody a haircut. Uh, we're just simply trying to have more funds available for road improvements. Simple as that. Um, we can't give you a direct answer, because I don't know for sure how many FLOs this body will approve this year.
Okay, have you guys thought about what's gonna happen to, for instance, the fire stations? They're gonna have to come back for millage increases, because they are not gonna be able to sustain a, a, a loss to their revenue. I mean, they have to grow just like we do.
Now, keep in mind, this is just the FLO portion of their property tax revenue.
I understand, but if, if you just said that one of them was gonna get hit by 500,000 dollars.
That's one of them. And, and we've actually are working on some, uh, remediation for those small districts that will be impacted. Uh, the fire districts specifically, I've talked to a few of you all about that, about establishing a way to, uh, give them, uh, a rebate, which we can do, county can do that, and-
Is that gonna come from the road fund?
Well, we haven't worked that out yet, Mr. Tripp, but, uh, that's what part of the, uh, plan would be, is to keep the, the jurisdictions as whole as we possibly can. Uh, but there again, we have road needs, uh, and we don't have another source to fund these.
Actually, we do, but we won't have that discussion.
Not in place, we don't, so.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, Mr. Payne.
Dr. Payne.
Thank you. Um, I was trying to decide whether I was gonna bring this up tonight or next week. Um, listen, and I, I try to give this some thought to try to find common ground with this crowd. I was sitting here doing the math, and we keep talking about we have got to give the taxpayers a tax break, give them some money back. I did the math with my phone with 5% battery left. One and a half mils is 6 dollars per 100,000. So, if your house is 200,000, you gonna save 12 dollars. And we did such a great job for the citizens agreement account, because we gave you 12 dollars. McDonald's is 12 dollars. Now, you get a large combo.
We didn't say 12 dollars.
Uh, let me, let me finish, Mr. Bradley. When we talk about workforce housing, some of you use that as low-hanging fruit, because, and I've said before, you wanna call it a scam, like yesterday. Um, we call it, you control the narrative and make it seem like it's people that don't work, don't wanna work, sit on the front porch, smoke, drink. And everybody on this body knows that's not the case. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure the citizens know what workforce housing is and what we spend the money on, not what they perceive it is, and then you echo the same thing, and let the narrative be false. I am asking the administrator, because I don't feel like fighting with y'all. The administrator always can magically find money. Since we are not taking 14 million dollars from the school district, we're not taking a half million dollars from Donaldson Fire District, we're not taking a half million dollars from South Greenville, Mr. Bradley, can you somehow leave them with their one and a half mil tax cut and find the 2 million dollars for workforce housing? And I am appalled, quite honestly, that this was omitted from the budget prior, Ms. Seaman, to staff getting with GCRNA, and you're talking about a haircut, that's who's getting a haircut. That's who's getting a haircut. Their community development block grant money that comes from HUD, zeroed out. Their housing fund that helps seniors on fixed income make repairs to their house, that fund, zeroed out.
I don't think that's been approved yet.
It's on the way.
They said they're worried about it.
They're wor, well, the letter I got-
Point of order, point of order, we're just making more conjecture.
Can I, can I, let me finish my question?
That's not a point of order, Mr. Br-
Well, let me, let me go ahead and address this. We, we actually are discussing the, the amendments, so let's get past that first, and then we can come back to that.
That's fine, but I do-
I have one follow-up question on the FLO. Most assuredly, there is some type of policy document that says, we are doing X, Y, and Z to the FLO program on, on FLOs moving forward. I'd like to see a copy of that language, because that's, I mean, that, these don't give us any insight into the decisions that are being made. The policy document is what we should be voting on, not this.
Well, and-
Being prepared, uh, right now, and it's coming, and it'll be run kind of parallel, just one step behind this ordinance.
So, we have to vote on this before we know what's in the ordinance?
Basically, you're approving the budget, is what you're doing. If the revenue doesn't come in, the expenditure doesn't go out.
I'm not talking about the budget, Mr. Administrator- No, I'm not talking about the budget, Mr. Administrator. I'm talking about the legal language that sets the parameters for what we're doing to the FLO.
This is just the budget. This is just for the budget. Like I said, there's an ordinance coming that the legal staff has been working on that will set out exactly what it does.
Okay, well, that's what we should be voting on, not this. No, I mean, we're making a, I mean, the ordinance, why, what, the ordinance is what has, is what has the effect of law, not this. I mean, this is an amendment, but the FLO is the law that we should be voting on.
It's not for the till twenty, it's not till next year.
I believe, no, I believe what maybe Mr. Administrator means too, is that before a third reading, when the budget's passed, we're going to have to pass that ordinance so that it's, it's workable.
So why are we voting on this, then?
Well, a big reason is because of the cameras and the people thinking that we're taking fourteen million dollars from schools, so they know that we've readdressed it, so it's not...
Budget's been adjusted from the one that was proposed to the public at first reading.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about the unlimited amount of money we're taking in the future, and so I think, you know, this body should have discussions about that before we pass...
Well, and just to be clear, I was, Mr. Administrator, I, from what I understand, what, what we would be passing is the way that we would be generating the revenue for the upcoming budget with the future growth, and I'm sure we could address that moving into the, the next budget cycle where it would potentially impact those bodies more, too.
Mr. Tripp, if I may, there's a current ordinance in place, a law in place, that we have to abide by, that says the county keeps thirty-one percent. So right now, you can pass that, you can pass something ten times that size, I can only keep thirty-one percent. Okay? So that's what we're, we're going to be bringing to you, and I'm basically amending that ordinance to allow us to have the flexibility to take more going forward, not going backwards. So right now, that is just putting the correct numbers in the budget. It does not change the law that's already in place.
How, if you're limited to thirty-one percent, how can you do these numbers? I mean, does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying, yeah, but if you, what I went, went through a minute ago, fund balance on those funds, is what allowed us to keep that going like that with an increase of six million dollars of growth for FLO.
What happens to these numbers if we decline to pass the ordinance?
Then we won't have, then we won't...
Do those, would these numbers then have to be backed out and adjusted?
Probably not the first year, but going to the second and forward, yeah.
Okay.
The fund balance is what's carrying us through the first year.
And where is this ordinance, and when are we going to vote on it?
The ordinance is, the county attorney's got it now. We've had about three different drafts as we've kind of switched gears, which direction we're going, and so it'll come to council, I would think, the next meeting.
And, but we're having to vote on second reading before that's...
Like I said, that's the ordinance that's already in place. So we've got a law in place, so quite frankly, this won't go into play until we change it going forward. So we're not taking any additional, we can't take any additional FLO money from anybody until that's adjusted.
Okay, so remind me again, is this going to committee? Is this something that's going to be kind of shoved under the rug in the budget like we've done so many times before? What's the process for this?
It's going to be a separate standalone ordinance that will come to committee as a whole. County council will vote on it, whether they move it forward to full meeting or not. That's up to y'all.
Mr. Chairman?
You're good.
Have you finished, Mr. Tripp?
I'm not good, but I...
I would, I would urge all my colleagues here to, to consider that, I mean, just look at our federal government, I'm going to bloviate for a minute here, is, take a look at our federal government, and they just needlessly and recklessly spend, and nothing's, there's no stoppage in place. What I'm suggesting, and what I suggested to the administrator was, at some point, we have to say, hey, we have to make, you know, the car last another year, we have to make that piece of equipment last six more months, we have to do some other things. It's, we don't have a blank check. In the years past, you know, like you said, it's been, just, we've had a blank check, and, and that's no way for, for us as responsible elected officials to operate. And to sit here and, you know, say that moving forward, hey, we're going to take a little larger share to, to reprioritize road safety for our buses. We have an accident once every three days with our buses. Major contributing factors are congestion and road conditions. So if, if people can sit here and tell me that's not important, well, I think it's pretty important that, you know, the thousands of kids that ride our buses, sixty thousand miles every day or something like that, it's, it's a lot, thirty thousand, I don't know the exact number, it's, it's a large number. That needs to be prioritized, and to, to put our head in the sand and say, let's just move forward, it's ridiculous. So consider that. We don't have a blank check. We're, we're, moving forward, the schools know that, hey, this money's going to be reduced. You're keeping what you got, we're not going to take any more from you, but you're not getting as much as you would in the future under current stances, because we need more to prioritize for our roads. I, I think that's a very responsible thing for us as a body to say. For as long as I've lived in Greenville County now, for as long as I can hear from people is, we've done not a whole bunch for the roads. We had twelve million, we've done what we could, but we need to make this a priority. And it was one of the, you know, big priorities for the council, and I think it should be. And, and to sit here and say that, you know, forty million's, you know, way too much for roads, I, I think, I think we're being, not good about it. It really does, it was something we needed to consider, and, and we don't have a blank check, and asking other entities to cut back and, and make their money, their dollar go a little further, it's, it's what all of us do at our own homes. So I don't think we're crazy asking municipalities to take a little less money in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Mitchell?
Councilman McGahey, I agree, forty million dollars is not enough. It's really not enough. But you seem to be talking both ways, or you're talking about, we need to make a priority and make a stance and do things that's going to fix the roads and keep our buses safety safe and keep our children safe and everything. But at the same time, you're saying, okay, we can give millage back. Clearly, we don't have enough money coming in to do everything that we need to do. We have a two billion dollar road problem, and we're going to try to throw forty million dollars at it to say, we're doing something, but we're not really doing anything. Let's go into the back room somewhere, beat our brains out, and come back and say, okay, how can we look at the entire budget, look at the whole process, and do something? We can't do it for yesterday, we can't even do it for today, but we can do it for the future. So I'm, I'm agreeing with you on one point, you know, forty million dollars is not enough, but at the same time, we don't have enough money, and we shouldn't be cutting millage to go back when we really need it. We should be shifting that millage somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Thank you.
If I may, I, I disagree with you respectfully, sir, in the sense that...
That's fine.
It's a reprioritization of the funding we have. And for us to go ahead and stick our head in the sand, say forty, just because forty million's not enough, we're not going to do anything, is absurd. And I just, I just think that, it's a reprioritization of what we got. We can't keep funding these other entities at the same pace, because we need to reprioritize some of that money to our roads. They're, they're going to have to make an adjustment, the county has to make an adjustment, everybody has to make an adjustment, everybody, this is an all-hands-on-deck matter, and the fire companies are going to have to do better, the school district's going to have to do better, we're going to have to do better. And if we do want to fix our roads, we have to make this, we have to start somewhere. And to stick our head in the sand is not the right answer.
Thank you, Counselor. We're approaching the six o'clock hour, so we can continue, or we can, somebody can make a motion on this one?
The motion's actually on the floor.
Motion's on the floor.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Russo.
If Mr. Bradley has, way early on in this thing, Mr. Bradley made the motion to amend.
Okay, so does everybody understand the motion that was made by Council Bradley?
Let's just go ahead and reiterate it based on all the discussion, to be sure.
We'd have to get that back.
Mr. Administrator, would you read it?
The, for the 2026 budget, reduce infrastructure bank FLO revenue by twelve million dollars. Reduce infrastructure bank transfer out to road program by eight point five million dollars. Reduce road program transfer in from infrastructure bank by eight point five million. Reduce road program expenditures by four million.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, of the council members present, you have seven in favor, three opposed.
Thank you, the motion...
And Mr. Collins is giving a signal that he's in favor.
Yeah, I don't have a way to vote, I am so sorry, Ms. Park.
All right, so just to be clear for the public, it was eight, eight to three?
Eight to three, yes.
Please, please.
Thank you. So the motion passes. Now, I know we have limited time, obviously, but before we vote on the budget as amended, is there any other things we need to take up? And I will go ahead and say this, since we're getting ready to wrap up, I think, I've talked to several people, and I think the intention is to still allow for motions at third reading, so this is not the, the end. Obviously, there's some more amendments that'll be presented, and we're also going to look at potentially another workshop, and after this discussion, I think we probably need to work through some of those issues, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Count.
May I ask the attorney, if we want to allow changes at third reading, what would the exact motion need to be said, please?
Well, the, what you would do is do it on the floor in regular meetings, so first, assuming you pass it out of here as amended, it would be on the floor, and then you would need to make a motion to amend at second reading, to amend that ordinance, to allow it to be amendable at third reading.
So we make that motion now to make that motion to...
Yeah, you'd make it, you'd make it on the floor in the regular meeting, assuming you pass this out.
Okay, great.
I did, Mr. Chairman. I, I voted for it, but I was very convinced, or I, I think Mr. Tripp's argument was very good, and I, I voted for it with the understanding that we are going to have at least one full day, maybe two full-day workshops on this, and that we will be able to make amendments. I agree with everything in this. I don't, I don't think we should pull the rug out of any of these people, any of these other entities, but just the way we did it seemed a little bit, it seemed a little bit different. So anyway, I, I do, I voted for it in favor, because I'm assuming we're going to be able to make amendments to other things in the budget on third reading. Thank you.
Yes, we are.
So are we, one more, so Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as amended.
All right, thank you. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. And I will entertain one final motion.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.